Good evening. Welcome to the Kamoor Tanawanda Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for February 9th, 2021. District Clerk, please note that all trustees are present. It's terrific to see everybody in person again, although guys are kind of far away, but you know, eventually we'll be back regular. We're excited this evening to be able to bring back our school and student and staff recognitions and presentations. Let me just remind everybody though to stay masked so that we can avoid the rules of quarantining and speakers when you speak, just a reminder to press the button for your microphones. With that, if you want, please stand for the pledge. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Holmes Elementary students via video recording, and then please remain standing for our National Anthem, led by Lindbergh Elementary 4th Grade students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its a home for which
That was awesome. Ready to put on my helmet and go out and play. All right, tonight our district mission statement and vision statement and values is going to be led by our student board of ed rep from Kamoor East, Lauren Reinhardt.
Our board and district vision is to be a community that creates dynamic learners who possess social awareness, confidence, and a belief in their power to succeed. The Kenton School community will provide our students with the supports, tools, and diverse opportunities needed to meet the challenges of an ever-changing world. Our values are mutual respect, independence, trust, teamwork, integrity, passion for excellence, and responsibility.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, item 4A in our agenda is our approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Leslie. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes from the January 12th, 2021 Regular Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Tom.
Second.
Second by Andrew. Any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. And next is the approval of the minutes from the February 2nd, 2021 Budget Work Session. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Leslie.
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, next we have our school recognition, starting with Holmes. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Samato for this portion.
Thank you, President Shamera. So good afternoon, good evening, I should say, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So wonderful to have our recognitions back and have people in person again. We have a lot of catching up to do with our recognition, so that we have two recognitions tonight on our track to getting all of our schools the opportunity to really recognize students, staff, and teacher from each school. So I just want to review procedures. So tonight, what we'll actually do is I'll go up to the front here, and we'll actually read and invite the person up that we're talking about. So because of COVID and procedures, I'd ask the person to just stand in front while I continue to read the portion that the school has, the information that we have on the person. And then what we'll do is have them pick up their certificate and their tee-shirt, so that we're not touching it and they're the only ones touching it. Then we'll ask them to have a seat, and I believe, how are we doing the picture? Refresh my memory. We'll stand behind them, correct? On either side of them while we take the picture, and then if family is here, for example, with a student, we'll invite you up to take a picture with your family member as well. Okay? So wonderful. Without further ado, let's start with our Holmes recognition. Now, do we go up there with it? Right? So the first person from Holmes, our first school, that we'll go through our recognitions, and then Holmes actually has a wonderful presentation for us this evening. I want to first call up Gabriella Dillon. Gabriella Gabby is a kind, caring, and hard-working student. She embodies what it means to be a Holmes Eagle, as she is always smiling, positive, polite, and extremely respectful. Gabby is always willing to help other students and has been a leader in the classroom for several years. Gabby's teachers had these things to say about her. Gabby is very positive with herself and her peers. She is also hard-working, both in class and while completing her homework. She is always upbeat and friendly. Gabby is a self-motivated student who always has a positive attitude. She is the child you know will have a smile on her face every day, which makes her a pleasure to have in class. Finally, she always has a smile on her face and a positive thought to share. It is not uncommon to see Gabby helping a friend. Join me in congratulating Gabriella Dillon. So Gabby, let's get your purses right here. Okay, you can take that, and then have a seat right here. Oh, let me move these off my picture. Gabby's family? You could come up right and take that. Our staff recognition at Holmes, Ms. Maryann Aquino Reif. Mrs. Aquino Reif has been a nurse at Holmes Elementary since 2014. She welcomes every student and staff into her office with Helping Hands. Maryann is very patient, reliable, and confident. She is able to think quickly on her feet and feel at ease in emergency situations. In addition, Maryann possesses a number of skills besides nursing. She provides emotional care for students and staff and continuously redirects student behavior. Maryann organizes staff events and chairs a Helping Hands Christmas program to support the Holmes community during the holiday season. Finally, Maryann is honest and trustworthy and inspires others around her. It takes a special kind of compassionate personality like Maryann's to care for people in their times of need. Mrs. Aquino Reif's colleagues had these things to say about her. Maryann is a nurse who exercises respect for all coworkers, patients, and families. She accepts all challenges with a smile on her face. Maryann is facing countless new challenges due to the pandemic, but she continues to make every student and staff feel seen and heard without judgment. Join me in congratulating Ms. Aquino Reif. So her, this one right here? This one right here? Okay. Wonderful. Do you have a?
I do, my bad.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Santa Maria, as always. Our next recognition from Holmes is Ms. Brittany List. Ms. List has been a special education teacher in the district for nine years, as well as being a volleyball coach at Kamoor West for those nine years. Ms. List exhibits the highest standards of professionalism and is a person of integrity. Brittany is one of the building's technology liaisons and is constantly supporting students, parents, and staff in the building with ever-changing technology demands. Ms. List is a highly effective educator. She has worked tirelessly to establish and maintain rules and expectations that give her students the opportunity to find both behavioral and academic success. Ms. List is a teacher leader in the building, as her colleagues turn to her for insight and best practice. Finally, Ms. List is respected by all because of her work ethic and her ability to put others first. Ms. List's colleagues had these things to say about her. Brittany comes to work daily with a smile on her face, ready to meet her students' learning needs. She is self-reflected and is always adapting her classroom and instructional practice, Google Classroom as well as physical classrooms at Holmes. Ms. List is organized, caring, and compassionate. Her ability to differentiate for kids is amazing, and to be honest, she is one of the best teachers I've worked with in my 15 years. Okay, so now I will call Mr. Rains, Principal of Holmes, to come up and lead us through the Holmes presentation for the evening. Everyone, welcome Mr. Rains.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank Board of Education, Superintendent Ohio, and all these assistant superintendents for allowing us to present. One of the many things that we're doing at Holmes to improve our student experience.
We'll wait for the PowerPoint to get queued up, and we'll get going. But I would like to invite two guests with me, Andrew and Kathy, come on up. Two wonderful professors from Buffalo State University that we've been partnering with for our literacy needs, and we're going to talk to you tonight about a unique partnership. I believe this is on. Okay, so we're growing our partnership with Buff State College, and we're going to talk about it as we go through the slides, but the PDS program is what it's called, and the liaisons are Kathy, Andrew, myself, and Mrs. Zona, Holmes's toesa. And I will turn it over to Andrew or Kathy for your own.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us here. It's so nice to be here when Holmes had their teachers and their students recognized. I want to tell you, from Andrew, my perspective from day one, that we went to Holmes with this idea of presenting a partnership with the school. It was such a warm and welcoming atmosphere, from the custodian right through to everybody we met. And the Professional Development School is a partnership that the college makes with schools. It started back in 1991. At that time, there was only one public school in the Western New York area that aligned with Buffalo State to create this partnership. Where teachers and students and professors from the college would work together to develop our student-teacher population. So we started this last August. We met with Mr. Rains, and he just embraced the whole idea with Mrs. Zona, and we brought our students into the campus, but they stayed right on campus, to work with the students at Holmes and the teachers. The teachers we worked with were amazing. Ms. List, who's here, was one of the teachers that worked with us, and it was just a rewarding experience for us, and we hope it continues for many years to come.
I'll just share a little bit of information about the program that is the core of the partnership. We've just newly redesigned our undergraduate program. It's a dual certification program. It results in undergraduate candidates having a teaching certificate in childhood education and special education. As opposed to older models that have students learning that material in silos, the new program that we've been lucky enough to partner with Holmes in unveiling is rooted in the belief that our teacher candidates need expert teachers, expert mentors, like Brittany List and her colleagues. They need shining examples of mentors like Matt and Chrissy, in which to learn and practice skills that are part of the teacher prep process. So that's the group of students that are participating in these partnerships.
So it's rather unique, and they explained this over the summer, and I was blown away because all the educators in the room, you go back to your teacher prep program, I shared with them, I remember going to Brockport, and it's not a bad knock on Brockport because my experience was great. I remember doing my field service observation hours, sitting on the radiator in the back of a classroom for 30 hours, thinking, how is this going to get me ready? Here, they're in our back room, these two wonderful people are teaching them the application of the coursework, and then they take an hour, two-hour break to go out to their classroom, and they physically learn hands-on with kids, with teachers, and they come back and they reflect and they digress what they went through, and it just really is an authentic learning experience that we're super thankful to partner with. So when we talk about this, we dive into our literacy needs at Holmes, and just some quick facts, and this was our presentation back in the fall. So these numbers are reflective of the fall before we had an opportunity to do our fall benchmark, but there are 69 students at Holmes. Thirty percent of our population qualify for RTI services. Also, if you include our kindergarten students, 58 students are in special programming. So when you run through this, 45% of the Holmes population, and remember, grades one through four, not counting kindergarten, are receiving some type of specialized form of reading assistance. We know that we have needs, but we have professionals and we have the support of the district to help bridge these. And this program, this partnership, really is another part that we're doing, another pillar that we're doing, to help bridge our literacy gaps at Holmes. And it's just important, I wanted to bring this up, because the Buff State program, it is helping our literacy needs, but it's not the only thing we're doing. And we wanted to give a quick thank you to the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Richards, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. White, and Mr. Muscarella for their increased interventionists and their need. We've increased our FTEs for interventionists based on need. We've also, as you know, we are implementing, this is the first year of a Tier One Balanced Literacy Program with Scholastic. Mrs. White and Mr. Muscarella have put a lot of work in to bring this program, which will help bridge our needs. And also, our entire staff. Our teachers every day are working to bridge this gap, and we are doing multiple things to help our literacy needs, but we are taking a team approach, and it seems to be working.
So PDS Professional Development Schools partnerships are rooted in the belief, not just of reciprocity, but in missions that are broader than either member, either partner. So we see that this is part of Matt, Chrissy, Kenton's effort to increase equity in schools and do that in a way that teacher candidates are part of that process, get to learn from expert teachers, and contribute to the learning and growth and development of the students with whom they work. So that's at the core of all PDS partnerships, is this ongoing evolution of us finding that mutually beneficial process and outcome.
So this is a partnership in action, a couple pictures for you. There were 11 students from Buff State that partnered with 11 teachers from Holmes, and they worked with our kids. Due to the restrictions with COVID, obviously, in the fall, we had to limit our interactions, and it was more observing, and it was more working online through Google Classroom, but we made that partnership work the best we could with the constraints that we had. And this is Katie Kyles, is a first grade teacher at Holmes, and Tara Riley is a student from Buff State. They have 30-second video clips that really encompass the entire experience, and we'll go ahead and play them.
The Buffalo State students started working with us before the school year even began. They continue to work with us on Mondays and Wednesdays for several hours in the mornings. Through this pandemic, we have learned that our own Kenton students learn best when learning in a physical classroom with a teacher right in front of them. The same thinking is true for teacher candidates like those at Buffalo State. They also learn best when learning in a physical classroom with a teacher right in front of them. The Buffalo State students have become inquisitive and active members of our classroom communities. After learning about our students through observations and assessments, Buff State students have created really engaging and creative lessons, and have worked with several students one-on-one for targeted instruction, all while maintaining the health and safety of our Kenton students. This new and unconventional partnership with Buffalo State is really exciting, and it shows teacher candidates how challenging, yet incredibly rewarding, the teacher profession really is. The partnership program is something I wish my own alma mater had established when I was completing my undergraduate program. It probably would have saved me a couple of headaches. On behalf of my colleagues and I, we are grateful and excited to continue this unique partnership with Buffalo State.
And then quickly, Tara is a Buff State student, and we'll hear that video.
This experience at Holmes Elementary School has been really impactful in my teacher candidate career. This partnership has allowed me and my peers to gain real classroom experience, as well as contribute to Kenton students' literacy skills. I'm grateful to be given this opportunity to apply the skills and knowledge I've learned over the semester, as well as work with the wonderful teachers and administration who have made us feel like we're part of the Holmes community. Our mentor teachers have shown eagerness to work with us, professionalism, and they stayed connected with us and their students during this time. Our mentor teachers have pushed us to do our very best, boosted our confidence in the classroom, and they provided opportunities for us to grow and learn. It's been an excellent semester at Holmes Elementary School.
And it really is a win-win for both Buffalo State and Holmes. In return, Holmes receives literacy support for our classrooms. Our students receive additional positive connections with adults. We have free access to the PDS Professional Development Opportunities through Buffalo State. We have a family literacy outreach that we're going to be working on growing in the future, and we do have opportunities for grant funding. And Buffalo State has a clinically rich program, the mentors' professional wisdom that students get. There's authentic classroom application, there's networking for these young college students, and there's service learning opportunities as well. So some achievements in celebration, obviously, 2020 has been a challenging year, and we've shown flexibility and resilience in the way we approach education. Home staff, we were invited to speak to the students. We had reading interventionists come in, administrators came in, teachers came in, and we had Q&amp;A sessions with the college students to help them prepare for their real-world application. And then our family literacy project, we'll be talking about in a quick second, but we are working on growing because we know that in order to bridge the gap with literacy deficiencies, we need to have an equal partnership with our parents at home.
So our plans for our future work together continue to evolve. They started with an idea of gathering, of enlisting our teacher candidates to gather data from staff and from Holmes families regarding literacy, access to literacy, and other instructional techniques that might be beneficial to families. Matt, along with the district, has been rolling out the Scholastic Family Literacy Engagement Initiatives, so we're excited to partner with that and extend the efforts from the Scholastic partners as well.
And then finally, just a special thank you. I know it's a very small picture to see, but that used to be our boys' locker room. It was a storage facility, there was lockers you couldn't see three feet into the room. And our B&amp;G staff, they cleared it, they put hardwood down, they painted the walls, they put LED lights in, they dropped air conditioning. Tech came in and put a TV, and it is a very unique collaborative space for our educators, both Holmes and Buff State, to use, but it fosters collegial relations, and it's huge. So a big thank you to B&amp;G, and a big thank you to all of our Holmes teachers that volunteered their precious time to work with these Buff State students to grow our partnership. So with that, I know we are pressed for time because we have multiple presentations, but we'll be more than happy to field any questions from anybody.
I have more of a comment than a question. It sounds like a terrific program. You know, typically, before COVID, we would be in the schools as a board, visiting the school prior to the meeting that you would come and present, so we would have the opportunity to maybe see that program in action and see the facility, and I look forward to being able to do that again in a short time, but it sounds like a terrific program, and at some point, I would love to get in there and see it.
Two days a week, every Monday and Wednesday, they come in from 8:00 to noon, and it's just, it's great.
And I don't have a question either, but a comment. Professor Hashi and I are on a committee together at Buffalo State, and he's conveyed to me a couple of times how excited he is about this program, and to see it in this presentation tonight, it is, as you mentioned, Matt, a win-win situation where everyone benefits and a lot of enthusiasm and excitement, so thank you, Buff State and Holmes.
We're looking forward to growing in the years to come. Well, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to share this with you. I'm always available for any questions or concerns, so please reach out, but again, thank you very much for this forum, and I hope you all have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we're taking a five-minute recess so that we can get Lindbergh Group to come in. Does my mic sound static? It sounds a tiny bit. Does my mic sound like... Nice job. Hey, meant to say, yes, say.
I apologize.
Our next recognition, Mr. James Holden, music teacher. Mr. Jamie Holden is the vocal music teacher at Lindbergh Elementary School. He is always such a calm and steadying force in the building. Jamie goes above and beyond with his efforts. Recording the daily school announcements as well as putting together staff videos for students and families to enjoy. These videos bring the staff together. He incorporates his creativity in everything that he does. Jamie is creative, dedicated, innovative, kind, and an exemplary role model of good character and kindness for the students. For many years, he has worked tirelessly with the 4th grade students to put together the school musical. Jamie includes social-emotional learning in his directing and teaching. He is respectful of individual student differences and brings out the best in all of his students. Jamie has also created beautiful musical resources for all of his students during this unusual year. Mr. Holden took on the challenge of teaching vocal music. This year, that was a Herculean effort. He stayed positive through it all and found new ways to make music with children. Mr. Holden is a valued and highly respected member of the Lindbergh family. Lindbergh is grateful to have him as part of our school. Join me in congratulating Mr. Jamie Holden. And with that, I will now turn it over to Principal Macagnano for our presentation on Lindbergh Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paula Nesticco, and I have the great honor of being the science lab teacher at Lindbergh Elementary School. We have a unique program here in Kenton. If you're not aware, at the elementary level, we have a dedicated time in a normal school year where the children would come to my room, and we would do "science lab," we call it. We call it the "science lab." And they come to do hands-on investigations that coincide with our standards. I like this quote very much. "Science is a way of thinking much more than it is a body of knowledge." I think that's becoming more and more evident today as all these changes that are so science-related are happening in the world. The COVID epidemic and global warming. So I take it as a great responsibility to create young learners that are informed and interested and able to interact with the world around them based on some background knowledge in science. The program that we have is based on the New York State Science Learning Standards, which are almost parallel to the National Next Generation Science Standards. It's a three-dimensional learning approach. I'm just going to pop over to that slide to show you exactly what that means. Maybe I'm not. It's not clicking over. Sorry about that. Three-dimensional learning is basically, we have what we call the "science and engineering practices," which is how scientists approach their science. We have the disciplinary core ideas, which are the knowledge of science that most of us think of about our science career. And then we have the cross-cutting concepts, which are seven practices that help students correlate all their science learning. It's a very student-centered approach to teaching science. It's phenomenon-based. And it's great because it's spiral. So the concepts that I introduce them to at the elementary level, they are pretty general, and they get to be reintroduced to them in the middle school level in more depth, and again at the high school level with more depth. The first New York State science assessment based on our new standards will be administered in June of 2023 to what are our current 3rd graders. They'll be taking it when they're in 5th grade. Can someone help advance the slide? Thank you. That was our three dimensions. Sorry, guys, technical difficulties. So normally, we call it "science lab." In a normal year, a normal day in "science lab," as I said before, it's phenomenon-based. So the day starts with a phenomenon that I show the children, which is a real-world experience that they can observe. So sometimes I do a demonstration right in front of them. Sometimes it's a photo. Sometimes it's a video that they look at. And then we start with our "I notice" and "I wonders." The children share what they noticed about watching the phenomenon, and then they ask questions. I teach them right from the beginning. The scientist's job is to ask questions and then try to find the answers to their questions. We talk about what we can do to answer their questions. We often conduct an investigation as part of how we go about answering our questions. And then we get together and we share and discuss results. So an example of this, as I've said before, it's a three-dimensional approach. So for a 1st grade lesson that I did this year, the disciplinary core idea or the science behind it was that sound can make matter vibrate, and vibrating matter can make sound. The cross-cutting concept that we were working with was cause and effect. And the science and engineering practice we were working with was developing and using models. The phenomenon I did for them for that lesson, we called it "mystery sounds." So I stood in front of the students with a barrier between my hands and them, and I produced a sound that they couldn't see what was generating the sound. So they had to use their senses and their background knowledge to try to predict what was making the sound, and that was our phenomenon. And then their investigation, I gave them each a toilet paper tube, a square of wax paper, and a rubber band. And at 1st grade, they were just told to use those materials to make a sound maker. Once they made their sound maker, their job was to observe what was making the sound and draw a model of how that sound was happening. So here's some pictures from that lesson with 1st graders. They're working with their materials and trying to figure out how to use them to make a sound. And as the teacher, I always strive to set the stage for experiences and explorations that lead to discovery and long-term scientific understanding. This young man got past the creating part and was doing his model. Even at 1st grade, they're taught that a model can be a drawing, and they show their knowledge and their understanding by using labels and describing what they're understanding. So one of the goals that we have is to have students develop critical life skills that are applicable to all areas of their lives as adults, like critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and using their creativity to solve problems. Another part of what we do in "science lab" are STEM activities. Oftentimes, that's linked to something. Their favorite one is the holidays. At Halloween, sorry. And as you can see from the pictures, the little kindergartners were building structures using toothpicks and candy corn and marshmallows. The 2nd graders built a web, a spider's web. They had a limited number of materials they could use. Strips of toilet paper, to be exact, and some masking tape, a limited amount. They had to create a web that could support their spider. They worked together as a team. Then they had to find out how many pennies the spider could hold. It was made from a sauce cup, like from a takeout restaurant. And then they discussed the results and why certain structures were stronger than others. And we have a little gentleman using index cards, building some structures and finding out what tall structures he could build. This year's been a little different. I'm in charge of teaching "science lab" as well as the science curriculum for the year. So to do that, I came up with a virtual "science lab," which is a place where students can interact even if they're at home. I post the lessons in the "science lab," and all of the images in the lab are links to resources that the children can use to explore their curiosity for science. One of the positive side effects of the COVID situation on education has been that families have been spending a lot of time learning together. And here's a little kindergartner who was at home using whatever resources she had to investigate forces, pushes, and pulls. There are really short clips. She tells you about what she's doing.
Hi, I'm Caroline. And I'm going to do an example of push and pull.
Okay, which one will you do first?
Pull.
Pull, okay. Go ahead with the ball. Very good. Now what about your next object? Very good. So she knows gravity is a push. Now, an example of push. Can you push the objects? Ooh, that one. Push? Oh, your ramp fell down. Which ended up going further? When you did push or pull?
The ball, the turner, and the pencil didn't go far. It was the same as the pull. The pull, because the pull was the ball going really close to its leg. And then the pencil went a little like here.
Okay. All right, thanks for sharing.
Hi.
One of my goals as their elementary "science lab" teacher is that every single one of the students in the building sees themselves as a scientist. So at the beginning of the year this year, I had the 2nd graders show me in a way why they see themselves as a scientist. So this little picture was drawn by Marinella, and she said she's a scientist because she's smart, she's curious, she's an observer, and she likes science. This young lady talked about how she's doing investigations at home. She's fortunate, she's told me her mom is a scientist. So they kind of did their own thing, even though it wasn't a lesson, and they shared it with me about using pH test strips to test the acidity of different fruits at their house. And this young man is, George, he's an athlete. And so even though he is one, he thinks of himself as a scientist by asking questions about the ball and how far it will go and what it will hit and how fast it will travel. And now I'd like you to have a word from two of our scientists at Lindbergh. First, let's have Hazel Benson. She's a 3rd grader.
I like science because we get to do experiments and learn lots of things. I like sketching a playground and learning about properties of matter.
And a 2nd grade scientist, Drew Securus.
I like science because we do fun experiments. I made a cup with using a string connected to another cup. It worked.
Thank you so much. We want to thank the Board of Education for letting us present to you our wonderful science program at Lindbergh Elementary. We'd like to recognize and thank Superintendent of Schools Sabatino Somato and the Assistant Superintendent of Schools Kelly White, the Director of Elementary Education, Mike Moscarella, and the Director of Technology and Curricular Innovations, Ian Varela. Does anybody have any questions?
I actually just wanted to compliment you on that. Both my daughters went to Lindbergh, and they're both science students in college right now. And Hazel and Drew, I think you guys did an awesome job tonight. You really did. And Drew, so my daughter's had Mrs. Burns. So I know Mrs. Burns. And she told me to tell you that you are a great student and that she's super proud to have you. And since you like science, and my daughter's had Mrs. Burns, I think that's kind of a neat little connection. So congratulations to both of you guys for coming in today.
Superintendent Somato, can we get a quick picture with Hazel and Drew?
Absolutely.
We have another short recess, right?
Yes.
I'd like to call up Dr. Ramona Santa Maria.
Dr. Santa Maria is a professor in the Computer and Information Systems Department at Buffalo State College, who has been actively involved in developing our high school career academies and fostering a proud culture. Dr. Santa Maria has won several awards for excellence in teaching, and she has presented research at the regional and national level. Here in Kenton, Dr. Santa Maria was instrumental in developing our high school career academies and making them such a success. She has helped bridge the connection between high school and college for countless students. She has arranged field trips to Buffalo State College for both of our high schools. She has come into classrooms to share her knowledge of computers and programming. Dr. Santa Maria has also been a key connection for articulation agreements with Buffalo State College for students in our computer courses, and she has helped us connect to the business department to articulate our virtual enterprise class. In other words, in the words of Nancy Prey, our career academy's coordinator, Dr. Santa Maria is passionate about helping students and creating exceptional experiences for our students. We are very pleased to present Dr. Santa Maria with the very first Community Connection Award. Congratulations. Okay, item 10A is our public comments. We do have a public comment this evening, so let me read our guidelines for making public comments. Any person may make a public comment by placing his or her name, address, and topic on the sign-in sheet. Public comments during public session are a one-way communication. The speaker will be recognized by the board president, stand at the podium, and state his or her name and address. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Board president will raise his hand when there are 30 seconds remaining, so the speaker can finish his or her statement. At the public board meeting, no person may orally initiate charges or complaints against individual district employees or board members. Speaker will be stopped if any board member or district employee is mentioned by name. Speakers are expected to avoid defamatory, abusive, or vulgar language. The president may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists improper conduct or remarks. Okay, tonight we have Mrs. Jessica Brumbow. Hi, Ms. Merle. Yeah, that's great, right there.
Hello, Jessica Brumbow, 172 Southwood Drive, Tonawanda, New York, 14223.
Thank you.
Hello. I have a ninth grader at Camer West and a seventh grader formerly of Hoover Middle, now attending private school at St. John the Baptist since the fall. You may be asking, why is this parent here again to complain about circumstances out of her control during this pandemic? I'm here again to tell you that there are things that you can control or address. As a parent, my job is to advocate for my kids. It is important for you to know that we are not okay with the status quo. I may be the only one brave enough to speak at these meetings, but many families feel as I do. I first want to commend the district for reopening schools. We knew it could be done safely, and you have proven that. We could see all the hard work that went into reopening, and the district did a great job. Now that schools are back open, I am asking the district to make Wednesday's sinkers for instructions, as was mentioned in the last board meeting. Even though schools are open, my child still only has had 11 days of in-person instruction since March. I'm asking for in-person instruction on Wednesdays with the weekly switch between the cohorts. Two extra days a month are better than zero. And on Wednesdays were originally supposed to be screen break days, catch-up days, interaction with teacher days, and deep cleaning days. The students currently refer to Wednesdays as vacation days, no-school days, and sleep-in-late days. After almost one full year of pandemic schooling, students need Wednesdays back to learn, and there's no reason why they can't do that in the classroom. I also ask for you to advise how many students are in the classroom currently? I know you're pushing kids who are in VLA to go back into the classroom, but they choose to remain at home. My daughter and other parents tell me that there are only five to six kids in their classes. If that is the case, why are you not allowing those that want in-person learning to go back more days? My third ask or question to our school board and superintendent is what are you doing to push for our kids to get back five days a week in person? I'm not under the illusion that school will go back to normal tomorrow. I know mask wearing, social distancing, we'll be here to stay until the pandemic is over. However, what specifically are you doing to get our kids back in school full-time? Who is in charge of the six-foot rule? Is it Dr. Bernstein?
About 20 more seconds.
Cuomo, the New York State Department of Health, the CDC, who's now making our new guidelines? Do we even know who can change this rule to open up the classroom, or is nowhere in charge, and everyone is just pointing fingers? Our kids are failing. I know this because I received an email just last week from my child's teacher saying so. It said the district is allowing extra credit so kids can get a passing grade. You are treating the symptoms
of panathus disease. Can you wrap it up, Ms. Merle?
I'm almost done. Can I please have a couple extra minutes? Thank you. You are treating the symptoms of panathus disease. Is passing kids helping them actually learn the material and helping them in the long run, or is the district just trying to look good on paper? I think state assessments and region's exams have a good likelihood of being canceled this year, which I agree with. However, maybe they should go on to just see the huge negative impact remote learning has had on our student achievement over the past year. I have heard, oh, we just have to wait, the pandemic will end eventually, and everything will go back to normal. The problem is that our kids cannot wait since they are growing up, and they're the ones losing the most during this challenging time. Schools are proving to be sacred, our kids are not in them. Why? We can go out to eat, shop at the mall, get a tattoo, even go to Disney World, but our kids cannot go to school. Businesses in New York State to open back up. Do parents have to sue to get schools to open? Does it have to get that far? New York State has allowed high school sports to start again, which I fully support, but they don't seem too concerned that our kids are being kept out of the classroom. Where do our priorities lie?
I have to ask you to wrap it up now, Ms. Brumbow.
I'm asking to speak on behalf of the 6,000-plus students in the district to give everybody the best education they deserve, which includes in-person learning. Why should those our community that have the ability to pay for private school get a better education than those that attend public? I've never seen this high level of inequality in education as I've seen during the pandemic. Come fall, many teachers in the district will not have students to teach, as our parents are trying to find places that offer five days a week in person.
Okay, we have to stop there, Ms. Brumbow.
It's not because we need to babysit our kids, it's because we know in-person provides a better education. Most of us parents have full-time jobs and careers that do not enable us to be in a stressful environment. I ask you to as a member of the board, to push less than five days a week. I can't believe it's going to happen without a couple of minutes to do it. I'm almost done.
We have to move on here. Thank you. Okay, item 11 is our Board of Education Committee reports. I know we had several meetings this month. Start with our, I know we didn't have a finance audit committee this month, but I know our Board of Education Policy Subcommittee met.
So Leslie and I met to talk about the board handbook. It's something that's been on our agenda to do for a while. We actually met a couple of times, I think, since the last regular board meeting, and we at this point have, I think, a pretty solid outline for the handbook. So again, the real goal here is to, there's a lot of tacit knowledge in the board about what our practices are and how we do what we do. I think, as you all know, there's a very limited set of things that are set out in state law in terms of what a board is responsible for, but most board members and boards of education do more than that, and the goal of the handbook is really to sort of define and document the norms of our board and sort of the standard practices and how we do things, whether it's how we do things at organizational meetings or holding retreats and those types of things. So I think we have a pretty solid outline, and Leslie and I have sort of split that up into chunks that each of us is going to take and work on. We actually reviewed, I think, maybe six different board handbooks from other school districts and kind of took that as inspiration, and I think there were a couple of sections, Matt, that we're going to hand off to you to help us out with, but our hope is that in another month or so, we should have a full draft for the board to review. If possible, I'd like, I know we have a board retreat next Tuesday. It'd be nice if we could have maybe 15 minutes just to kind of go over the outline of where we are and get some early feedback from the board, see if there's any other topics that any of the other board members want to make sure that we cover in the handbook before we really dive into getting the content put together, and then obviously, before that's approved, we'll have some additional review. But if there's, I know we've already talked about quite a few things for the agenda, but if we could squeeze another 15 minutes in just to kind of go over that really quick, that'd be great.
Yes, I meet with the superintendent tomorrow for a weekly six-hour meeting, so we'll talk about that.
I think I'll just add a little bit on that. So I think one of the things that, I think the reason why Andrew and I decided, like, we chose to do that is kind of, I'm the new board member sort of perspective, and he's got the seasoned veteran, and so, you know, there's some questions that, when I started, I asked, and I have a little bit of a perspective of maybe how some of the things that I wasn't sure about can be written, and he's got the sort of more difficult task of some of the things that I'm still not too sure about as, you know, a new board member. And then, yeah, Matt, we are going to ask you to help us out with a couple of things as well, but I think we, you know, our two dates that we met, we got a good handle on who's doing what so far, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, our staff development policy board met on January 14th. There was a lot of discussion about a possible reduction in the center's budget due to, it's unclear whether or not the state is going to reduce the grant that the policy board gets each year, so that's still kind of up in the air, but there was a lot of discussion about that. Committee is also working hard to improve staff participation, support staff participation in the workshops, and there was also discussion about the, on February 26th, the committee will be having a full-day retreat. In the past, it's been done at Prax Air. They let us use part of the facility for a retreat. Unfortunately, this year, it's going to be done remotely, but that'll be happening on the 26th.
I'll just add from my perspective. I know they said that their registrations have been better than other years. I think a lot of the technology offerings that they've been doing have been really worthwhile for teachers, and in addition to staff, too. And I think one of the important things is the C T L E credits, those teachers that have to get those. I mean, that's required by state law, and the fact that they can, they have access to be able to do courses that count for those is just amazing, so I think that's actually a really good thing, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, how about, let's see, the ECASB Legislative Team?
Okay, I attended that one on the 21st of January. It was a pretty quick meeting. We discussed kind of a little bit about board advocacy with our state representatives. We're supposed to be scheduling a virtual meeting with our state reps. We haven't heard word yet about when those meetings are going to be, and I know both myself, Jen, Matt, and I think Superintendent Sumato and Assistant Superintendent, I'm trying to remember who else was, oh, Marasco is also going to be in attendance once we have a date, hopefully, but I have not heard back yet about that date, and I think that's really, it was a really quick meeting, actually, surprisingly, so it was kind of a little bit about some new updates as far as things that the state legislature is looking into. One of the ones that was kind of an interesting one is, was called eLearn, and that the state is looking to ensure that all children have access to high-quality broadband internet, thinking about assessments on technology providers and actually maybe looking into a dedicated state fund. I'm not sure how far that's gone in the legislature yet, but it's been introduced, so I thought that was kind of an interesting thing that was addressed there, so.
All right, thank you. How about the SAVE Committee? Did that meet?
Yes, that met on February 3rd, and Leslie and I both attended that. The meeting started, and they reviewed some of the restorative justice practice and principles as compared to traditional disciplinary approaches, which I found interesting, because I'm just kind of learning about the restorative justice, and so that was nice information to receive. One of the other topics that was discussed was that the code of conduct needs to be adapted for elementary schools, and there needs to be some differentiation in the wording between elementary and secondary education. The other topic that was discussed at length was the student dress code, now that staff are being asked to keep windows open for ventilation for COVID purposes, so we discussed possibly allowing hats, coats, and hoodies to be worn in classrooms, you know, now during COVID, so that kids can stay warm. Everyone in attendance at the meeting thought that that was a good idea. That's what I have. I don't know, Leslie, if you had anything to add to that?
I think the only thing I'll add is, you know, that the discussions about the dress code was pretty, you know, thoughtful by all of those who addressed that, and they also discussed the addendum to the 2019 revisions of the code of conduct that was added because of COVID, so things having to do with, like, students remotely, learning remotely, and certain things that had to be put in place for that, but I actually found it a very informative meeting, so.
Thank you. Did the Family Support Center meet this month?
No, we meet this week, on Friday.
Let's see, technology, the District Technology Committee met on Wednesday, February 3rd. The meeting was led by Mr. Ian Varell, and, who was our district director of technology. Mr. Varell updated us, updated the group on a lot that's going on in technology right now. One of the big items he talked about was improving our infrastructure, and the technology team's working hard on improving our network to be a, from a one gigabit to a five, to five gigabits, to, in order to support the demand that's been created by so much online use within our schools. What I thought was the most impressive part about the meeting was when he talked about our one-to-one device to student rollout. We're now pretty much one-to-one throughout the district. He mentioned that we do have some Chromebooks that are on back order that will go to third and fourth graders to replace the iPads they're presently using, but pretty much every student in the district now has a device, and it, I was thinking back to my first meeting this year with Mr. Sumato, back in, I think, July it was, and one of his biggest concerns was that we weren't one-to-one in the district, and the challenge we were going to face with COVID and with just getting the district up to par with something that, where it needed to be. So he stressed that it needed to be a goal, and here we are, six to seven months later, and we've reached that goal. So I want to congratulate the whole administrative team, the whole technology team, and everybody else involved in getting us there. Thank you. All right. The Wellness Committee, did they meet this month?
The meeting is next week, or tomorrow, actually.
All right. So the Counseling Committee met yesterday, and the main part of the meeting was a sharing of what's happening in all our schools at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, in the counseling departments. I was impressed to hear how much is going on. I could, I'm not going to spend all night, but I could spend all night with some of the ideas that were talked about that are going on in our schools. At the, I'll mention a couple, though, at the elementary level, we have various Unity Day activities that have been going on, also things like Mindful Monday, Thoughtful Thursday, Wellness Wednesday, those are all days that were talked about in the various elementary schools. Hoover Middle held a virtual scholar breakfast for those students with a 90% or better average for the first quarter of 2020. Both Hoover and Franklin are conducting virtual counseling sessions. At the high school, some neat things going on. There was an actual lawn sign parade. They took the top 10 seniors academically and delivered to their house by parade. Teachers got, in cars drove over to these homes of these seniors and delivered lawn signs and cookies to those households, and they're also in the process of beginning a staff mentoring adopt-a-student program for students who are struggling or at risk academically. As I said earlier, there were many other, there were many other things, but those are some, I thought, some of the highlights. Let's see, it brings us up to, I think the only other group we haven't mentioned is the Tonawanda Community Working Group that also met this month, and this is the group that is monitoring the cleanup, sorry, the cleanup of the former Tonawanda Coke site. This last meeting was a relatively short one, and it seems like things are moving along pretty, pretty well. They were pleased, up until that point when the meeting was held, that the winter had been kind of mild and they'd been able to get a lot done. Since that point, probably, they haven't gotten a lot done, but, but they seem to be moving along, moving along nicely. Okay, I think that's it for the committees. Any board comments?
Sure. I just wanted to mention that I attended the February 3 virtual Capitol Conference and learned that NISBA's top two priorities for the year are commitment to equity and to explore pathways to graduation, which was on track, I think, last year about this time by the regents, but, you know, they didn't have local forums to talk about pathways for graduation the way they had originally planned, so that's back as an agenda, high agenda item, but they're considering apparently portfolios and project-based learning, that kind of option. At the Capitol Conference, I was very impressed with a presentation by legislator Shelley Mayer, whom I met in Albany last year. She chairs the Senate Education Committee and is very knowledgeable about education needs and issues, seems on top of things, and she also ominously sees, quote, "a disastrous financial cliff next year" for districts, and that term has come up in a number of webinars that I've sat in on the last couple of weeks concerning the budget. And then, along with Jen and Matt, last Thursday, I attended the virtual presentation by Rick Timms, and maybe talk about that some more, but he talked about the budget crisis as well, and I've seen him before. He's always very smart and engaging and kind of grim with financial news, but this time, his message about rising costs was kind of especially bleak, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll just say that I attended, along with Jen, the ECASB advocacy training, which was actually pretty good training for what we'll do when we have our meetings with our legislators, but the one thing that I sort of leaned out of it that I thought was pretty important, they kind of presented a pyramid of advocacy, and they said the biggest group of people who can advocate on behalf, especially with the budget, but on all things, are not just board members, but board members in partnership with administrators and parents and students, and that the more people who can sort of let the state legislators know how concerned we are with, you know, everything that's going on, the better off we'll be. So, you know, that was sort of one of the big things that I took from that. And then I also attended the Super Evail training as well. I think Matt and Jen, that was, that was pretty good, gave me a little bit more insight in that. And then I just wanted to let, I just wanted to say that I had provided Superintendent and Kelly White with some information about the upcoming AP exams. As a teacher myself, and advanced placement teacher myself, and somebody who does some work for the College Board, I was able to get from a colleague of mine some information about the upcoming AP exams. I'll say it looks like a daunting task for everybody involved, but I left all of that in the good hands of Kelly, and have, that's a pretty long PowerPoint from the College Board, but it's pretty informative, so.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Last Wednesday evening, I attended a meeting of the Parent Cabinet. A parent cabinet was established by Superintendent Sumato as another way to improve communication between the district and the community, and the cabinet's made up of parent representatives from each of the schools, and during the meeting, the superintendent gave an update on things going on in the district, and then each school had the opportunity to share things that were going on within their own schools, and it was, it was neat to see how much they've been able to do, even with COVID and even with protocols in place. And then finally, the group had a chance to ask the superintendent questions, so it was, it was a neat experience to. So it was a, it was a neat experience to, to experience that. This past Friday was the Jerry, the Jerry Star Sleepout. There's been a lot of information the last few weeks about the Jerry Star Sleepout. We've seen it in district updates, we've seen it in the news, we've seen it on television, the district website. So there's a lot out there, and I'm sure Mr. Sup, I'm sure Superintendent Sumato's going to talk a little bit more about it. But having witnessed it firsthand Friday night for the first time, there's a couple of people I, I'd like to just recognize and thank. First of all, our officer over here, Officer Cristiano, who volunteered his time all night long to keep, to keep people protected there. Thank you very much. And then Mr. Finelli, who's been all around the room here. He, he does so much. He's our Community Relations Director. But he did so much in the way of publicizing the history of the event and, and getting the news people there. He was a big part behind the scenes. Thank you, Patrick, for that. Mr. Mike Colmar, who's the custodian here at Kemore Middle. He's been doing, I think the sleepout's been going on 38 years. And Mike has slept out over 30 years at that time. But, you know, he, he gets the whole thing set up, and he got the fire going and kept the fire going and, and cleaned everything up. He was, he was outstanding. And then finally, Mr. Steve Ash, who is a former math teacher at Kemore West, who was at the beginning, he really began this whole thing and has been doing it all 38 years. And again, the behind-the-scenes work he does to get this all going is, is impressive. But I just wanted to mention those individuals. Thank you.
Question is, did you guys survive?
We survived.
You survived? Okay.
I didn't get a lot of sleep because the guy in the box next to me was snoring a lot.
I stopped by to see you guys, to see how you were doing, and it was really cold. I was wondering if you survived.
It was probably the worst night of the year. Okay, any other board comments? All right, so that brings us to Item 11C, which is a resolution to nominate Erie Wembosie's board candidates. So it's the, the item which is a resolution for a call for nominations for trustees to the, to serve on the Erie County Board of Cooperative Services Board. This resolution would be to nominate Mr. Edward, Edward Caven of 252 Willow Green Drive, Amherst, New York, which is located in the Sweet Home School District, and Mrs. Renee Wilson, who presides at 10 Dennis Lane in Chictowaga, New York, which is in the Chictowaga Central School District, as candidates for the election to be held on April 20th, 2021, to serve as trustees for the Board of Cooperative Education Services for Supervisory District of Erie County in a term beginning July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Andrew. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, 11, Item 11D is our Student Representative Report. Our, we're very proud of these two young ladies. They've been doing a lot of work, and they're here to share an update on some of that work.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two things we want to talk about tonight. First off is the ongoing development of our new leadership program. And then some of our personal student experiences since our return to hybrid learning. So over the last several months, as you know, we've been working on our new student leadership program. And we're excited to say that we have an official date for our first District Leadership Council meeting, and that's going to be on March 1st. And just a reminder, that is the council that will be made up, made up of the 7th graders and the 12th graders from individual school building PLCs, which are the Principals' Leadership Councils. So they'll be meeting with Kendall and I, as well as Mr. Suma, or Superintendent Sumato and Board President Shemera. So that's really exciting to, to actually see some real progress and to see it play out. So we've been in contact with the building principals to discuss the date, and Kendall has some more information about that.
So we actually worked on an agenda last Wednesday, and we have one all ready for our first meeting, so we're very excited about that. And we're excited to keep working to see where this first meeting will go. We have been in contact with the principals, and we actually have a few PLC meetings tomorrow that we're in attendance for, so we can talk to them more and get their input on our first District Leadership Council meeting. So to, for back to school, we're both hybrid currently, and it has been great. It's so nice to be able to get in contact with our teachers, even if it's just two days a week. I know personally, it's way easier for me to be able to do my math and my science because for IB, we have to do these super intricate science experiments that we create on our own. So it's really helpful that I be, I get to meet with my science teacher and ask her questions on my project. Even though it's happening at home, I can still get the input that I need.
Mm-hmm. As I say, same with me. It's been really beneficial being back in school, even if it is just two days a week. It definitely has been adjustment, but like I said at the last board meeting, students are really committed to keeping their school safe in terms of masks and social distancing, and everything I've seen has been positive. Yeah, teachers have been finding really creative ways of making sure that virtual students are just as involved as in-person students. I mean, it's fitting because we were talking about science labs earlier in the meeting. But one of, for my physics class, we, our teacher essentially forced us to work, when we were in person, forced us to work on a lab with students who are at home by making sure that we were partners and just like making sure that the communication was there. And you just, you couldn't just talk to people in class, you actually had to talk to people at home, so.
And like, oops, sorry. And like Lauren said, making our school safe, everybody wants to be there. So everybody's wearing their mask, they're staying, staying their six feet apart. None of us really want to go back to all virtual, so we're trying to do our part to make sure that doesn't happen.
Things have been really positive, so.
Great, girls. You can see how difficult it is to work with these two. They're just awesome. Thank you. All right, that brings us up to Item 12, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Shemera, and great, great job, ladies. Just great job. And President Shemera, I think, said it the best, that it's, it's great working with students. And we know we still have a long way to go to get to where we want to be, to consider things somewhat back to normal. But it's just so refreshing to be able to work with the girls. Thank you very much for providing us that. So a few things, just, I'm not going to take too terribly long with the updates that I wanted to provide, but I wanted to piggyback first off of President Shemera. He spoke of the Jerry Star Sleepout. This year, what I'm being told, as of right now, and donations are still coming in, people can still donate, but more than $8,300 was raised. And that is, according to Mr. Finelli, our highest amount in more than six years. So not bad during a pandemic year. And it really just is, it really signifies something about our community, our families, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, that everybody realizes the significance of service and, and doing something to whatever people can do. I know that night, we had, I'll just give an example. So it started snowing pretty badly, and it was cold. There was a gentleman next to me in a box that was snoring very loudly. But a dad came by in, in his truck by himself, and he said, "Hey, I just, I just saw some stuff on Facebook. I know it's not a lot, but I just wanted to bring, you know, this money by." And what struck me about that wasn't just about giving, was about that this community is so in touch with each other when they hear of something, even in snow. If they think that they could do anything, they'll do anything to help. And that dad that night signified that to me. And it was just really refreshing to, to see that and to see the community come together. Wonderful job by, I know that President Shemera mentioned Steve Ash. Steve Ash is just a wonderful man. I think he really embodies what Mr. Starr was about forever in this district and will continue to be in that legacy. A very dear man to me in my upcoming upbringing in Kenton when I was a kid. So very, very near and dear to my heart. So it was a wonderful event. Thank you very much to all of our community. And thank you, Patrick, especially for just doing such a wonderful job as you always do. It really, I, I thought that it was really a great, a great event. The next update that I wanted to give is on athletics. Just real quickly, just to recap. So folks, I know it gets so confusing because so many things have been moving around, right? And we're in winter right now. So when I say that, I really don't mean it sarcastically because we had a fall, then we had a postponement, then we're, there's a rescheduled fall, too. We're in winter. There's low risk, medium risk, high risk. It's just very confusing. So just to recap on that. Low risk, if everybody remembers, started in the beginning of January. For us, that was rifle, boys swim, and boys and girls bowling. Now, rifle got put off because we were worried about some circulation issues in the rifle range. They're back at it this week. So congratulations to Tim Ames. I know Ms. Brown, our coach, does a tremendous job and just been really patient in working with our B&amp;G Department to make sure that things are, are good there and safe for the kids. And in these, in, well, let me talk about the high risk before I talk about the situations. High risk, high-risk sports, those are, that are considered high-risk sports. They were cleared and began on February 1st. And those are boys and girls basketball and boys and girls ice hockey. And just to give a kind of a, a recap of what's going on right now with athletics. So currently spectators, there are no spectators allowed, but it is constantly being reviewed because that's what we have to do in COVID. That's not only what our district does, that's what Section 6 does, that's what the state does, that's what NISBA does. And we'll continue to look at all those, all those different things as we progress through the pandemic. The good news is, is that you have people like Mr. Banker who are very dedicated and are constantly reevaluating to make it the best that it could possibly be. So I would imagine that as we continue through athletics, just like as we continue through education this year, there are going to be some changes. We are not where we will be in June. Now, hopefully, it's always for the better, right? Hopefully, we keep on going in the same direction. We know that this pandemic has thrown us some curveballs, so we have to be prepared for that. I, I think the goal with athletics is the same as the goal that we have in education, is to get the most that we possibly can get. Nothing beats face-to-face, nothing beats having parents, nothing beats students being able to compete. And we're doing it all by the guidance in what we're allowed to do. You know, I, I heard a phrase, "See the light at the end of a very, very dark tunnel." It's been a very dark tunnel, but we can see the light, and things are, are becoming better. So stay tuned and stay aware of that. And I will update you, of course, weekly, in our weekly updates if anything changes. And I'm sure we'll see things on the news, too, as there's a different news brief every day. Finally, I wanted to also piggyback off something President Shemera had discussed, and that was the Parent Cabinet meeting from this past month. And at Parent Cabinet, if we could, just bring up that, that one slide. Just to, I'm not going to go through all the presentation or anything, but I wanted to just make you aware of, these were the topics that we discussed at Parent Cabinet. So the zone designation, safety in the schools, athletics, planning for the future, parent group updates, questions. I know President Shemera had discussed that. And it's really, we, we did it in person. It's a representative from each school. And it's a real, not, it's structured, but it's more, I guess, what do I want to say? Not as, not as, Gina, help me with the word that I'm looking for. It's, it's not, yeah, it's more informal. Thank you, Patrick. I'm sorry, I ate Burger King. I'm, I'm way off kilter tonight. So it's, 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 it's much more informal. And parents get to talk, I get to, I get to talk. They get to ask questions, we get to interact. But the biggest thing that comes from it is that we continue to grow through our communication. So another thing that we determined the other night, and Patrick's going to share this with you tonight, is that as schools share out, we're, they're always, they're always having aha moments, you know, where they get to hear from each other, "Oh, you did that? How did that work?" "Oh, that could work for, in our school. Oh, if we tweak that and did it this way." So what we decided to do was, we decided to make a web-based sharing of best practices where parents can upload their best practices, things that they do in their school community, so that it can be shared by all the communities within the district and continue to generate ideas. So Patrick's going to just show you that and talk about that concept of how they do it.
Sure. And yeah, there's a few ways we could do it. We decided to try it through, using a Google Doc. And if you, on our website, there's a news section I started to build before the pandemic, Families, you know, there's information like on, on all the parent groups in the district, how to get involved, things like that. There's a tab for, for, there's a, there's a link for Parent Cabinet. And so on that page, there's some general information about what Parent Cabinet is, you know, meetings, summaries, and then the section on sharing best practices. So right now, we, we're just starting with four topics. I'm sure we could, you know, we're going to be adding topics as, as we go. And then each topic leads to a shared Google Doc. And so there's a question, and then there's space for each of the schools to, you know, to, to provide their sort of, you know, their answer, their response. And then everybody can see it. And only the parent group leaders can edit, but everybody can view it. So I'll just use the meetings one as an example. And we just set this up within the past day, so it's going to take some, you know, time to, to accumulate information from all the different schools. But this is what it looks like. And it, just within the past couple of hours, I saw something that one of the schools put in that was an interesting observation, and that was that, you know, we've, they've observed that participation at meetings has been higher than it had been pre-pandemic when they were in-person meetings. So virtual meetings might be something that will continue even after the pandemic. So that was just an interesting observation I saw. But that's basically it. It's just a way for schools, for the school parent groups to share information. We'll see how it goes. Several times at the Parent Cabinet meetings, especially at this last meeting, things kept coming up, like one school would say, "Oh, we're doing this," and another school group hadn't thought of that. And so then they were asking questions, like, you know, "Where do you, where do you get the t-shirts?" You know, things like that. So it's just a way for, yeah, for them to share information.
That's excellent. Thank you, Patrick, very much. So just another example of also Patrick Finelli. Patrick really does a little bit of everything in the district. And he, he really is a tremendous resource, just does great, great work. And thank you, Patrick, for everything, as always with the parents. So that's, that's pretty much it on the updates for this month. Any questions or discussions or clarifications on those topics? I know typically, we would wait, we've had a lot of presentations tonight, but if there's any questions on either the Jerry Star, ETC, athletics, or best practices Parent Cabinet, I guess we probably would take them right now if there's any discussion or topics, or questions, I should say.
Well, yes, I'm really happy that we're resuming the winter sports. I'm sure we all are. And the high-risk sports, I'm sure, will be challenging if what the Sabres and college basketball are going through are, is any indication. Athletic Director Banker provided us with a copy of our own health and safety protocols for basketball. And I was not surprised, but very gratified, to see such thoughtful procedures in place on our part. And I especially want to commend Athletic Director Banker for, once again, going above and beyond what the league protocols have established by taking extra precautions that require our student athletes to wear masks at practices and games. But I do have a couple of follow-up questions. One is about the masking policy. Mr. Banker, do you know whether other schools will reciprocate our policy of masking at basketball practices and games?
Dr. Rigstad, thank you for the compliments. Thus far, is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. Thus far, are you laughing at me, Lauren?
It's okay, yes.
Join the crowd. Thus far, Dr. Rigstad, we have approximately five of the nine schools in Niagara Frontier League who have agreed to mask up on the court. League who have agreed to mask up on the court. Four others will not, will choose not to. We could have student athletes who cannot tolerate a mask due to asthma or other upper respiratory issues. For us, if they bring in a doctor's note, we'll consider that, but for now, which is better than the fall, I might add, more than half of our schools in the league will mask up for basketball, which is better than we were in the fall.
Okay, well, thank you. That's a good step, for sure. And then I have one other question regarding officiating for the indoor sports, of course, but like for ice hockey and basketball especially, will referees be wearing masks during competition? And did the league consider having the refs use electronic whistles or whistle covers as an alternative to traditional whistles in order to avoid bursts of droplet particles from filling the air when they blow the whistle?
Unfortunately, the officials' organizations are independent contractors. Although we pay them to referee our games, they are independent contractors. They have a contract with Section 6, so we don't have the authority to require them to wear masks. Many will be, and I'm aware of, in physical education, in fact, we purchased some of the whistles you speak of. Some of the referees will be masked up, I would say many, but they don't have to, and we can't legislate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Rigstad, to your question also about student masking, what was really refreshing in the fall, and it actually came up at the parent cabinet this week when we spoke about athletics, was that everyone was extremely proud of our kids because of just the pride that they took in, that they were following protocols and procedures. It was, you know, and a child, for example, in a soccer game, if they were away from the play, moved to a side of the field, they're not near anybody else, they'd pull down, take a couple breaths, and pull it back up, and they learned some of those things, some of those tricks of the trade during the pandemic, but all of the parents really spoke of just how glad that they were, that they saw the class and character from our students, so I think we're going to probably do pretty well with that also in our upcoming seasons. At least that's what I'm anticipating. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just one thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the Star sleepout, the donations you mentioned, those are going, those are staying local?
Yes.
It's Kenton Cares and Closet, correct?
It's Kenton Closet and the Kenton Family Support Center.
Family Support Center, okay. Thanks.
No, absolutely. Thank you for, I should have said that again. Thank you, Trustee Bateglia. Anything else? No? Okay. Okay, and so the other thing, President Shemera, you will notice, it's an action item. I just want to talk about the calendar and the revisions on the calendar. I have a feeling that there may even be more revisions on the calendar in the future this year because we're only in February and we're in a pandemic, but this is what we have right now. So there was a superintendent's conference day that was moved in March from a Friday, the 19th, to a Wednesday, the 17th, so that it wasn't interrupting, at least right now, where our schedule is, a day of in-person instruction. And then additionally, their Juneteenth is now being observed in New York State, and we will also follow suit as a district. I will clarify for people that you will hear a lot of different things about Juneteenth this year because Juneteenth falls on a Saturday. So with it falling on a Saturday, a holiday falling on a Saturday, some people will and some people will not observe it on that Friday, but Regents' Exam schedule observes it on the Friday. Us, as Kenton, we will observe it on the Friday. Next year, it will be observed on a Monday. Now, with that being said, how we're doing that is that we had four emergency days that were slated in the calendar, because remember, we still have to meet our instructional days for New York State, so we reduce those to three as emergency closing days. If we were to exceed those three from there, before we would start reducing other vacation time for students and things of that nature, we would begin to implement virtual learning days in the event of an emergency. So if for some reason we ever had to extend past those three, we would take advantage of the New York State Snow Day pilot, and we would make those virtual learning days. Right now, we have not used any. Hopefully, we won't use any. There was a time on Friday night where I thought that we would have to use one because of how badly the snow was coming down, and I'm only teasing about that, but hopefully, we're already, I'm not trying to jinx this, so I won't talk about it too much, but just hopefully, we won't use any. Okay, any questions regarding that? Okay, so for that, then, President Shemera, I'd put to you for the board to take action on the revised 2021 district calendar.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 2021 revised district calendar?
So moved.
So moved by Leslie.
Second.
Second by Andrew. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, and with that, President Shemera, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Student Services, Ms. Kelly White.
Thank you. I don't have any updates for this evening. I do have a couple of items on the consensus agenda. Were there any questions on any of those items? If not, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Oh, okay, Kelly, that was nice and short.
That was one of the best presentations ever.
It was one of the best ones. And from there, then, I will turn it over for an update from our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Ms. Nicole Marasco.
Hi, thank you, Superintendent. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I, like Kelly, only have a couple of consensus items, otherwise my reports are there as stated. If anyone has any questions on those items, please let me know. It's three contracts for environmental testing related to our project and just our general daily buildings and grounds items. Otherwise, I have nothing, I don't have anything else.
Assistant Superintendent Marasco, I don't have a question about those items, but I do have one about finance, and it relates to the Capitol Conference webinar that I, or virtual conference that I attended last week that NISWA sponsored, and the whole morning session was devoted to the executive budget proposal. And one slide that was shown was on charter schools, and there are two proposed items regarding charter schools in the budget that I knew, and I'll just read them, they're just a sentence each. The executive budget reduces charter school tuition rates that districts are required to pay to charters and reduces supplemental basic tuition reimbursements paid to districts by the state, and in parentheses, 50% of the tuition reduction. And I know that we spend, you know, gobs of money every year to support the charter school in our district, but I wasn't sure how to interpret, it seemed like kind of a mixture of good news, bad news that would impact our finances, and I wondered if you could weigh in on that.
Sure, I can speak to that. So we receive $1,000 per FTE, so per full-time equivalent student that goes to a charter school, from the state, and they're talking about reducing that, cutting that in half to $500 per pupil, and reducing our expenditure to charter schools if we had a reduction in our services aid, which they're not proposing at this time under the governor's budget. So it would only affect us about $115,000, I looked, if I looked at last year's, to see how that change would have been made. So it's not, it's pretty nominal if you look at our budget as a whole. So we should know more about that and what that would look like as the budget is refined for us and as we see the legislative budget come out.
Okay, thank you.
With no other questions for Nicole, just to also say, as Brett's department, athletics falls underneath you, as I did not say in the district update, but I did meet with the coaches this weekend with Mr. Banker, and our coaches in our district really do a phenomenal job. Their dedication to everything that is happening, not only during typical times but during this time, is really second to none. So great job, Brett, and make sure you share our appreciation with all of our coaching staff. With that, I'd like to move to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Jeffrey Richards.
Good evening, everybody. I only have, I don't have a report tonight, but I do have one item on the consent agenda regarding a contract to assist us in setting up our timekeeping modules, our new timekeeping modules, if there's no questions on, are there any questions on that? Okay, that concludes my report, if there are no questions.
That was another short one. There you go. Thank you very much, President, or Assistant Superintendent Jeff Richards. And President Shemera, I will turn it back over to you if there are any questions on consensus, but I am turning consensus over to you.
Okay, are there any requests to withdraw specific items from consensus? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Tom.
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, next is our tenure acknowledgements, but I don't think we have any tenure acknowledgements this month. So next is our moment of silence. It's a moment of silence to recognize those in the Kenton school community who have passed away. We actually have 15 individuals this month to recognize. Let me read through them. First, we have Frederick Adams, father of bus driver Angela Adams, and husband of support staff substitute Holly Adams. Charles Blakely, retired district administrator. Julie Cardella, mother of Edison social worker Christine Pazanka. John Francis Jack Carey, father of medical director Deborah Carey. Shirley Sumato, aunt of superintendent Sabatino Sumato. David Bruce Collins, father of Tim Collins, Ken Maurice Cleaner. Richard Galivan, brother-in-law of Ken Maurice teacher aide Nan Galivan. Dolores King, grandmother of Edison teacher assistant Jamie Keller. Dorothy Miller, mother of medical equipment operator Peter Miller and mother-in-law of Kenmore West teacher aide Cheryl Miller. Lindsay Muir, mother of home student, a home student in Elena Puccio's class. Elsie Knackreiner, grandmother of Edison art teacher Wendy Yent. Donald Ogilvy, former Kenton administrator and Erie One Bosie superintendent. Helen Pepege, grandmother of Kenmore East student, special education teacher April Jaeger. Frank Twist, retired teacher and Kenmore East assistant principal. And Loris Marie Willert, longtime physical education teacher in Kenton. Let's take a moment to honor these individuals and their families. Thank you. Okay, any other matters? I just have a quick announcement that I already sent out, I think, to everyone on the board and to our cabinet, that Buffalo State is sponsoring a virtual event in the middle of the month called Calling All Future Teachers. It's a series of virtual presentations by different education departments at the college talking about, you know, how to become an English teacher, a math teacher, science teacher, elementary ed, or special ed, and in this time where we're facing, you know, a pretty severe teachings shortage in the next three or four years, this might be an opportunity to get the word out to parents and any students who might just be considering a career in teaching. And it's free, and it's, you could go to sample all of the presentations there at different times outside of the school day in the middle of the month. So if anyone needs the link, I'd be happy to provide it. Wonderful. Thanks, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, we have no need for an executive session this evening, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Leslie. Second by Andrew. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're